It's taken all along.
I don't know about that one. I think you're close.
After eight?
I think so.
Eight.
Kind of right in the middle there.
But soon.
What? We shall see.
You crack me up. We're not hard to predict.
I now call to order the community redevelopment agency meeting of the city of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, March seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen, at six thirty. Roll call?
Chair Archie?
Here.
Vice Chair Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Tierpenny?
Here.
Commissioner Banther?
Here.
Commissioner Seber?
Here.
First item we have is approval of minutes, January thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen, CRA. Shall we adjourn the motion?
Move for approval, second.
Any public comments on this item? Roll call.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tierpenny?
Yes.
Vice Chair Larson?
Yes.
Chair Archie?
Yes, item number two is CRA annual report. Lemons.
Thank you, Mayor and CRA Board, Karen Lemmons, Economic Development Manager. I'm pleased to tonight present the report for the community redevelopment area for the year two thousand and fourteen. This is an annual report of activities that's required by state statutes to report the activities and financial activities of the CRA. The fiscal year two thousand and fourteen runs October first of two thousand and thirteen through September thirtieth of two thousand and fourteen. Just to give you a little background, the Tarpon Springs CRA was created in two thousand and one. It was expanded in two thousand and three to include the Pappas Restaurant property. It totals almost two hundred and thirty acres and has six hundred tax parcels in it. CRAs are created in areas that need private investment and revitalization. And so our goals for our CRA are to stimulate that redevelopment, to encourage economic growth and attract the private investment that's needed, and to prove attractiveness of the central business district. This is the boundaries of the CRA. It's generally bounded by Mears Boulevard to the south, the Anclot River to the north, and then it takes in properties east and west of Alternate Nineteen, and it takes in the central part of the downtown area. These next two slides will show the accomplishments that have been achieved over the past year, and then I'll briefly elaborate a little bit more on each of them. First of all, we completed a business survey last year. We looked at two hundred commercial properties, both the property owners and the business owners of the properties. They made several recommendations, and we began implementation of many of those recommendations this past year. Secondly, we really started increasing our tourism promotion efforts by capitalizing on the success of Allegiant Airlines and the St. Pete Clearwater Airport. The St. Pete Clearwater Airport is the primary airport that serves our region. Allegiant Airlines serves forty-three cities. Thirty-two of those are from the east coast and the Midwest, which is our primary market. Last year, they had one point two five million passengers come through the airport, which was an increase of twenty-five percent over the past year. So knowing all of that and knowing that we're trying to capture these visitors, last year, for the first time, we took out a two-page ad in the onboard magazine for the airline called Sunseeker. The two-page ad, the first part of it was our sponge diver ad with our brand, Visit Greece in Florida, and the second was essentially like a magazine article that talked about all the great things to see and do in Tarpon Springs and to entice the visitors to come and visit us. We're doing the same thing again this year, and in fact, the magazine is out right now. If you fly Allegiant, you will see Tarpon Springs featured in there. It'll be running through April of this year. The Merchants Association also, for the first time last year, took out a similar two-page ad. Theirs ran from November through January, so Tarpon Springs was represented on that magazine for six months out of the year. The photo that you see here is an example of the expansion of those efforts. People are reading the onboard magazine for their two-over flight. They're going to step out now into the terminal. When they get to the baggage area, they're going to see these ten-by-five displays showcasing Tarpon Springs, showing where it is in relationship to Clearwater, and showcasing the website, and again, using that Visit Greece in Florida brand. This one is at the entrance to the restrooms, which most people go to when they get off the plane. The other ad is at the baggage claim area as you're looking, waiting for your bags to come out. It's a combination of efforts between the Chamber of Commerce, the Merchants Association, and the city. This particular ad by the restroom was paid by the Merchants Association, and it's going to be up for three years. The other ad by the baggage claim carousel is being paid for all three of these groups, and that will be up for one year. And even though these aren't paid out of the CRA funds, it's paid out of our general funds, but it's really important, and the advertising that we do have has a profound impact on our businesses. It brings the visitors into town, into the Sponge Docks, into the downtown, and to get great exposure for our businesses. So we're very pleased at the success of this. We completed infrastructure this year. The Splash Park, as you know, had its grand opening in July, and the Pinellas Trail improvements were also finished in this past year. We expanded our downtown signage program. We added additional hanging signs in the downtown area, put up a new directional sign at the corner of Tarpon and Hibiscus, and I'll talk about those a little bit again. We had nearly twenty-five new business openings within the CRA, and we expanded our grant programs. And the grant program expansions were a direct result of the recommendations from the business survey. And moving on to the business survey that we completed, these were the significant recommendations from the survey, and then what we're doing to implement those. The first, we, one of the recommendations was to add additional grant programs and recruit more restaurants to the central business district, so we're doing just that. We created a new restaurant recruitment grant. We also created a new Greek Town grant. Second recommendation was to increase signage visibility for our businesses. So again, we expanded the downtown hanging sign program, and we added the directional sign. Another recommendation talked about the, how great the historic Train Depot is. It's a great welcome center. A lot of visitors come there, gives a great history of the city of Tarpon Springs, but it was staffed only by volunteers, and it wasn't open as much as it could have been. So last year, as you know, the city added a staff person in the budget, so the Train Depot is open now, longer hours, and more visitors can come and look through the museum. And then finally, the recommendation to streamline our permitting and approval processes, and we have some code recommendations that will be coming forward. As you know, we've had a new planning and zoning department. There were reorganizations with the building department and development services, and so that gave us a good opportunity to take a look at what we're doing, what our practices are, and how we can make things more efficient, both in permitting and approvals, and we'll having some of those coming forward to you in April. So looking a little further at our grant program expansion, the restaurant recruitment grant that I mentioned, the purpose of that is to recruit new restaurants to the downtown area, primarily full-service restaurants that will be open day and night after five. That will help to bring that nighttime foot traffic that we've been striving for and working toward. It would be used to renovate interior spaces for older buildings that have been vacant for a long time, and for buildings that had not been restaurants in the past. It's reimbursable up to seven thousand and five hundred dollars. So far, I've given out four applications, which, and we just started this in February, so I think that's a good sign. The photo here is of the building at one fifty-one East Tarpon Avenue. That's currently vacant and being renovated, but it's a perfect example of a building that could be a great restaurant, and qualifies for both the CRA grant and the restaurant recruitment grant. So it's an example of incentives that we can provide to help lure some new restaurants to the area. The Greek Town Traditional Cultural Properties Grant, this takes in a portion of the CRA. We use the boundaries when the Greek Town Traditional Properties Cultural District was created from the National Park District to use that as an eligible area for a facade grant, which also takes in the Sponge Docks. And this grant, the idea is to stimulate some building improvements within that Greek Town area, and also recognizing the historical significance of the area. It's reimbursable for up to seventy, seven thousand and five hundred dollars, and Plaka was the first restaurant to apply for it. And with this one, I've given out three applications so far, and we've approved one already for Antonia's Gifts. That's the store on the corner of Dodecanese and our Ferris. And both of these programs were funded through the sale of the nursing home. And then this is our original facade grant program that was established in two thousand and eleven. This one continues to have a tremendous positive difference in the downtown, and is a great example of when buildings get renovated, it will attract new businesses. This reimburses up to ten thousand for a single-story or fifteen thousand for a two-story for commercial buildings and exterior building renovations. To date, we have awarded twenty-five grants totaling one hundred and fifteen thousand in reimbursements, and those twenty-five grants equal a total private investment of about five hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and only twenty percent of that was grant funds. The five hundred and thirty is based on construction value permits, which typically are a little bit lower than what the actual construction tends to be, so likely, it's a higher private investment than that. Of the projects that received the grants, their values increased by three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which equates to an additional twenty thousand in property tax revenues to the city. And we've had a couple of great examples. Some of the projects have been smaller. We've had some big ones. We had one property that increased from sixty-six thousand to one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, another one that went from fifty-five to one fifteen. And then all told, since the project started, we have rehabilitated nine vacant buildings, six historic structures, and all but two of those six are occupied today. Here's photos of some of the grants that were awarded this past year. Lundano Art Studio, Mr. Suflaki, Lucas Landscaping are some of the grants that we awarded. Mentioned the signage program. The photo at the bottom shows that directional sign that we placed on the corner of Hibiscus and Tarpon Avenue to pull attention to the shops on that street. You know, after a decade of being vacant, we were able to revitalize that street, and this was the last piece of that revitalization effort. And on the right, these were the hanging signs that I alluded to. This is Mad Hatter General Store. And we have ten of these so far downtown. They hang above the awnings of the businesses. It's a partnership between the CRA and the businesses downtown. The CRA pays for the brackets, and the business owner or the property owner pays for their individual sign and the installation of those, and you'll be seeing more of those this year. The Heritage Preservation Board had unanimously approved and supported this program, so we've got the approvals of there, and the business owners have really enjoyed it, wanting to get the rest of their businesses with the signs. I mentioned the infrastructure that we completed. This is a picture from the Splash Park that opened in July of two thousand and fourteen, and the final trail improvements that were completed. We've had several new business openings in the past year, nearly twenty-five of them. This shows the Replay Amusement Museum, Narcosis Scuba, Vintage Treasures, Krusty Bread Bakery, and then we've had several openings in the Tarpon Hotel Arcade Building. Some newer ones that haven't opened and will be opening, I did include in this because this is up to two thousand and fourteen, but I think it's important to mention. We've got a new CrossFit company called Ocean Point. They're opening in the Manatee Plaza next to the former Windexy. They're doing their interior renovations right now. The Mears Building at one oh six East Tarpon, which had been vacant for some time, has a new business, One Amazing Find. They just opened last week. They offer furniture and accessories, and they also do painting classes and furniture restoration classes. Yard of Ale is opening this spring. That's in the former Lagerheads, and they've been working feverishly on that. Silver King Brewery in the old police fire station, they opened about a month ago and are planning a grand opening in the next several months. You've probably seen all the activity at the former Tea Flies, at the corner of Ring and Tarpon Avenue, and that's going to be called Johnny's Filling Station. They have a restaurant right now out of Orlando, and they'll be opening up soon. The two hundred block of East Tarpon Avenue is getting a new bakery called Cinnamon Swirls, and that's, think of it as a cross between Cinnabon and Starbucks. So as it relates to the Mayor's Fitness Challenge, which is ending this Saturday with a five-k run, I guess people might, if it's open by then, take advantage of that, but it might set some people back a little bit. Zorbas, they're moving into the former Katz Restaurant. That's in the, next to Muzzy's where Ace Hardware is and our southern gateway. And significantly, with a lot of these business openings, these are restaurants, places that will be open day and night in the downtown area that will be really helping to drive that nighttime foot traffic that we've been striving for and start to create that evening vibe. Festivals and events, we continue to host festivals and events in the downtown. It's great exposure for our businesses. The focus in the last couple of years has been less on the quantity of the events, how many, and more on the quality of events, making sure that we have good events that bring lots of people and fill the streets. And then this is the last slide. This is the projects that we are going to be working on as we move forward. We'll be marketing, again, the Greek Town and Restaurant Grants. We've just started to do that, and that's looking positive. The recommended code changes will be coming forward. We'll be looking at some conditional uses and some of the permitted uses by right that we can do to streamline our approvals and make things more efficient, more business-friendly as we can. And then we'll be looking at, we're working on several projects right now, one of which is outside of the CRA, but it will have a great impact on those businesses within the CRA, and this is specifically the Mears Town Center. Right now, we have a proposed project for a two-hundred-and-seventy-unit apartment complex that would replace the old medical office building that, as you know, has, is not moving forward anymore. And if this project can be successful, that will trigger the extension of Mears Boulevard into US Nineteen, which, as we've talked about, will open up that entire south gateway area for development, not only the Manatee Plaza, but in also the northwest and southwest corners of Mears and Alternate Nineteen. It'll help the Ace Hardware Plaza and the Shepherd's, where the Shepherd's Center left, and there's a vacant lot there, so that's going to do a tremendous amount for that area. We're also working on a residential development on Ring Avenue between Orange and Center Street. This is a townhome and single-family homes that are proposed to be located there. It would require the removal of two vacant homes that are on Ring Avenue right now. The Heritage Preservation Board has approved the demolition of one of those structures and the relocation of the other. I think you probably have seen the one house that has free house on the outside of it. That's the home that's been agreed for demolition. The other one will be relocated. This is a wonderful project for the city, and, you know, hopefully, we'll be able to pull everything off with it. What it will do is it will clean up that entire corridor, and it will bring residential housing to the downtown area with people. That means people walking, getting into that live, work, play that we have been also striving for in the downtown. We're also working on a database of city-owned properties, looking at the properties that the city owns. Do we need to keep them? Are there things that we don't want to keep? Where are they located? Where are they contiguous? Specifically, along Stafford Avenue, there are several properties that are owned by the city, Tarpon Springs, and Pinellas County Housing Authorities, so we're looking at the possibilities for those, potentially Santos Isle-type housing developments along that trail area. And then finally, I just wanted to give a brief overall picture on the financials. When the CRA was created in two thousand and one, there was a base value of forty-one million. Today, the value is seventy-one million, which is a seventy-five percent increase. And also, this is the second year now that we've had an increase in the property tax revenues from the year before. There was a five, five-point-three percent increase over last year, and we currently have a balance of one hundred and eighty-three thousand in the CRA, so we're, the financials are improving and moving in the positive direction. So generally, we've experienced another year of progress. We're seeing an uptick in the economy. We're looking forward to working on these projects and more, and hopefully, hosting a lot of ribbon cuttings and groundbreaking's in the next year. And with that, I'll end the CRA report for two thousand and fourteen.
Well, I just want to take the time to thank staff and thank the city manager, you know, sometimes we don't thank him for his leadership. But when things go wrong, we definitely lay the blame at his feet, you know? But we do thank you for your leadership in terms of what's happening in the CRA area, and then thank Ms. Lemons for execution of the plan and the vision, I believe, of the commission in terms of trying to do more in the CRA area, trying to attract different businesses, trying to make that area into an area that continuously represents what we believe is Tarpon, and that's a vibrant community. You know, sometime, as always, there's a lot of negative things that's said about what doesn't happen within the city and city government, but I want to just tell you, Ms. Lemons, and you, Mr. LaCourage, that I personally appreciate, and I think we appreciate your efforts in terms of in that area, and even though Lowe's, we know, is not in the CRA area, but all of us are definitely pleased that that's a project that we're looking forward to, you know, starting and being completed. We've had our hopes up in the air with it once and let down, but, you know, we look for that to really happen. And, you know, when you came on board, I said that we looked at you as being a superwoman, and I do think that you have met that standard and more, simply because, you know, when we've had situations where we needed your help and expertise in other departments, you stood tall for us as a city. And sometimes, we take those type of things for granted as far as employees are concerned. We just feel like, hey, you're here, you're supposed to do this, but anybody that's ever worked on any job know that all employees are not willing to take on tasks that, quote-unquote, "I was not hired to do." It's not in my job description, but I believe that you have went above and beyond what was called for, so I'd like to just publicly thank you for what you've done since you've come to the city, and I definitely am pleased with the direction that the CRA is headed in. So with that, Commissioner Tierpenny?
Thank you. The mayor certainly said a lot in gratitude, and you and I will as well. I would just say that I always look forward to the CRA reports because I feel like continuously you paint a bright picture, picture of Tarpon Springs and the direction that it's headed that I think we can all be very proud of and look forward to the future. The panning's bright. I was shocked to see that the assessed value now went from forty-one million in two thousand and three, I think you said, to seventy-two million. Is that right?
Yep.
Yeah, so I mean, that's a, that's a huge jump, something to be very proud of. You're certainly fulfilling in my belief the goals and objectives that this commission has set for you, and the goals and objectives that you've set for yourself. So keep up the good work. I appreciate it.
Ditto, basically. Thank you, Karen, for not only the CRA and everything you've done, but stepping in wherever you're needed and helping development services and the great job that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, question, Mayor?
Thank you. I don't have any questions at this time, but I would also like to say thank you, Ms. Lemons, for the informative and, more importantly, positive presentation this evening. Thank you.
Commissioner Beth?
Same, same as my colleagues, and I just can't express enough thanks for all you've done for Lowe's and getting that in here. That's going to be huge for this, for the, for the, this, this, this community, and many of us thought it was dead and done, and I know you worked behind the scenes a lot to encourage them to, 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 to come back, and I appreciate that, and I think the people that will have jobs there will be very, very, very thankful as well.
Thank you all.
Do we need to accept that? Just information. Any public comments on that item? If there are none, then we will adjourn the CRA meeting at seven fifty-four. I now call to order a regular session meeting of the Board of the Commission of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, March seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen, at seven fifty-five. Roll call?
Chair Archie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Tierpenny?
Here.
Commissioner Banther?
Here.
Commissioner Seber?
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Bob Russell of the Family of Faith Church. Will everyone stand? Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance following.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come together tonight in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. As we gather here in chambers of our city hall, we ask that you provide wisdom and leadership towards the needs of Tarpon Springs. We further ask that you bless these procedures while providing patience to those seeking guidance and information, while encouraging empathy and patience from the council. This town has so much to offer, our friends and guests, the Sponge Docks, the Greek Cathedral, the quaintness and history of Tarpon Springs, wonderful restaurants, and our latest attraction is a full-scale replica of God's tabernacle in the wild. With so much to offer, I challenge each one here tonight to do all we can to preserve the character of this fine town. Let us be a beacon to the rest of our country to live in harmony, showing love and respect to every citizen. May you further bless those who provide services, the city engineers, the city maintenance workers, city hall staff, water departments, waste removal, environmental department, and of course, our first responders, the police department, fire department, and paramedics. Please bless and keep safe members of our armed forces, and especially those families bereaving the total sacrifice given to protect the freedoms that we so take for granted. Thank you, Father, for allowing us to live in this great country. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now go to public comments on any item that will not be discussed this evening. Seeing none, I'd just like to announce that item eighteen, ordinance twenty fifteen dash zero eight, application fifteen dash twenty-one amendments to the Comprehensive zoning and land development code article nine, section one thirty-three point zero six, Tree Bank, first reading is deferred. first reading is deferred to April twenty-first, two thousand fifteen, regular session. And our addendum item, order this twenty-fifteen-dog ten, application fifteen-dog ten, vacation right-of-way, Tallahassee Drive, first reading is deferred to April seventh, two thousand fifteen. With that, we'll go to proclamation, and the first is Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service. This proclamation reads, whereas service to others is a hallmark to the American character and central to how we meet our challenges, whereas the nation's mayors are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet city needs, whereas AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants address the most pressing challenges facing our cities and counties, from educating students for jobs of the twenty-first century, supporting veterans and military families to provide health services and helping communities recover, recover from natural disasters, whereas national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. Whereas AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants serve in more than sixty thousand locations across the country, bolstering the civic, national, and faith-based organization that is so vital to our economic and social well-being, whereas national service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors, whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, strengthen communities, and is joining with mayors across the country to recognize the impact of service on the Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service on April seventh, two thousand fifteen. Now therefore, I, David Archie, by virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, do hereby proclaim April seventh, two thousand fifteen, as the third annual Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service. I don't believe there's anyone here. This, um, let's see if Mr. Sosos is here. We have another proclamation. This proclamation for Greek Independence Day. And this proclamation reads, City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, whereas we commemorate the one-hundred-and-ninety-fourth anniversary of Greece' independence, the celebration of Greek Independence Day on March twenty-fifth, two thousand fifteen draws inspiration for honor of the holiest days for Greek Orthodox Christians, whereas on Greek Independence Day, we celebrate our special ties of friendship, history, and shared values with Greece, whereas Greek Americans have made a mark in every field by enhancing our culture, enriching our commerce, defending our freedom, and whereas their strong record of public service has also strengthened our democracy, their contributions have made America a better place, and whereas, March twenty-second, two thousand fifteen, has been chosen for the Greek Independence Day parade in the City of Tarpon Springs. Now therefore, I, by virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, do hereby proclaim March twenty-fifth, two thousand fifteen, as Greek Independence Day, and I urge all residents to join in celebration, plan for the contribution of the Greek community of our society. Is Mr. Sosos here? We'll make sure that he gets that. Any public comments on either one of these proclamations? If not, we will go to item number three, and that's the famous Bertie Higgins' presentation of the city, to the city of Tarpon Springs.
My name is Bertie Higgins, born and raised in Tarpon Springs. Went to school right in this building. First off, before I get started, I want to thank the police department and the City of Tarpon for allowing us to do the Charlie Cave Festival a week last Sunday, okay? Phyllis Coleianus, did I get it? Phyllis Coleianus called my brother-in-law, Warren King, about three months ago and asked Warren if I might have a gold album and award that I could present to the Historical Society. Well, I've got several, but I had one made up especially, and it's a platinum album, which has over a million sales of my first CD, which was just another day in paradise. Less than ninety-eight percent of musicians around the world achieve platinum status, and I'm humbled and moved because I have, but I didn't do it alone. I did it with the help of my mother and father, who were very patient, my wife Beverly. And I was just been blessed to have this. My high school English teacher was Otis Rag, who taught me the gift and the idea of writing songs. He was a wonderful teacher. He used to wear two different shoes to school every day. This one and that one were different. Loved him for it. And Henry Kelly, with the whip, taught me the gift of music and music theory. So it all played into me becoming the singer-songwriter that I eventually did. I thank the City of Tarpon Springs for nurturing all of us in a positive way as children, always, always pushing in a good way to help us improve our lives, and certainly did that. You know, all around Tarpon, as I come back and forth, it's crazy. It's busy, it's packed, but interior Tarpon remains unchanged, which is a beautiful thing. It's almost like when I was a child growing up here. Very, very great community to grow up in. We had such a great time and learned a lot. And I promote Tarpon Springs as much as I can when I travel the world. Been to China a lot in the last year and a half, and that's all I do is talk about our village of Tarpon Springs and how wonderful it is. It is my honor and pleasure to present this, where is it? Oh, there it is. You want to take the rag off that thing? We take a look at it? Thank you, I appreciate it. There you are. It is my honor and pleasure to present this platinum album to the Historical Society of Tarpon Springs, and I want to thank you so much, and God bless each and every one of you. Thank you.
Can we all get together? That's all.
I will. We're all doing it. All right. Oh, yeah.
Society, and we are extremely happy and pleased to be able to have Bertie's platinum record on exhibit at the Historical Society Museum, which is the historic train depot downtown. And we'll have other albums that we have to add to it, so I hope everyone will come look at it and enjoy it as we will. Thank you so much, Bertie.
I'd just like to thank Ms. Coleianus for her efforts in getting Bertie to do this for us. You know, he is our professional singer. I know there might be more, but I don't know who they are, and I don't know anybody that's accomplished more than he has as far as music is concerned, and still maintain his roots here in Tarpon. Whenever Tarpon has needed him, he's been here, he's performed. This was an opportunity for him to come back and do something to help Tarponites, you know, healing processes for Charlie Cave is concerned. And I just want to thank him for still thinking of us and himself as basically Tarponites. You know, once you are a sponger, I tell them, you're always a sponger. You know, and only spongers understand being a, quote-unquote, "sponger." Anywhere in the world we go, if you say "sponger" as a mascot, they look at you a little funny. But we from Tarpon understand that, and I just want to thank Bertie for that, and thank you, Phyllis, for your efforts in getting this done for us. Any commission comments? Any public comments? If not, then we'll move on to item number four, which is Sponge Dock Restroom Design Award. Anybody handling that one? Oh, all right, Karen.
Thank you. This is an award that the American Institute of Architects holds each year. It's a design award program to recognize excellence in design by the architectural profession. The local chapter, AIA Tampa Bay, holds its program every year. It's open for architects in the Tampa Bay area, reaching north to Crystal River and east to Lakeland. The program was held in November of 2014, and Hoffman Architects of Tarpon Springs received the Merit Award for Architecture in the Small Projects category for the design of the Sponge Docks restrooms. And just to let you know of some of the other awards that Hoffman Architects has won throughout Tampa Bay, specifically in Tarpon Springs, their other award projects include the Sponge Exchange in nineteen eighty-two, Lepa Ratner Museum of Art in two thousand and three, the Booker Creek Preserve Environmental Education Center in two thousand and five, and the Tarpon Springs Elementary School, which in addition to the award from the AIA, also won a design award from the Florida Educational Planners Association in 2010. And then last year, Hoffman Architects received the AIA Tampa Bay Firm of the Year Award for 2014. So we're really proud to have Ed Hoffman and Hoffman Architects in the City of Tarpon Springs, and I'm pleased to introduce him to present the award.
Great. Bertie did a wonderful job of talking about his roots here. I could talk for hours on that as well, on this stage, et cetera, et cetera, and I am very, very proud to be in Tarpon Springs and call it my home and be a product of this wonderful city. I'll be very brief because I know I'm standing between us and maybe some corned beef and cabbage. Happy St. Patrick's Day to all of you. This is, this is an award which we received, as Karen had mentioned, and it's probably one of the smallest projects we've done. We did two projects, as you know, and I want to thank TBE, excuse me, Cardno TBE, who are the engineers that used us as the architectural consultants to do the job. We did the two restroom projects. We became outhouse experts, and we did the one downtown on Tar, just off Tarpon Avenue in the park there, in the parking lot. And then, of course, we did the one down on the docks to the east, excuse me, to the west end. And we're very proud of that. It's a different structure. But the other real big, big thank you is I want to thank Mark LaCouris because these projects, I didn't think a lot about them. We always want to do nice work for nice people, but I didn't think a whole lot about the restroom design, other than the functionality and that it'll fit in and that kind of thing. But we were going into Rotary one day, and Mark said, "I just can't wait to see what you're going to come up with for those, for those restrooms." And that, that was like throwing the gauntlet down. It's like, oh, it can't be just a simple little pavilion that I was kind of thinking of, that this one has to be something special. So I have Mark to thank for us to actually put down, tore off the page, started over again, and came up with that structure that's very nautical that, by the way, the whole thing is suspended by those cables. That's an integral part of the structure, which became the nautical theme for the building itself, and apparently the jury liked that very much. So anyway, with that, I guess, Mr. Mayor, it's not platinum nor gold, but it's all that I have. So with that.
You know, I thought of a lot of things when I was up here. At, first, I just want to say I appreciate you and what you do for Tarpon. There are some people that are always doing certain things that help Tarpon to stay in the limelight, on a positive, in a positive area, and you for your work in terms of architecture has always helped people to look at Tarpon favorably, and we definitely appreciate that. We know, like you said, you are a Tarponite, as Bertie was, and a lot of us are. Then I was thinking, the people that know me know that, you know, I like to think that I'm funny sometimes. And I was thinking about this and the irony of it, in the Sponge Dock area, you know, a lot of things have happened, and people have said some things that was maybe not so kind about you, and you get awarded for designing this restroom or outhouse, and you and both Mark receive a lot from the area sometimes. And I just let those that are wise enough figure out what y'all are receiving from down there that relates to the restrooms, you know. That's, that's going to take a little while for some people. It'd be maybe tomorrow before you figure it out. Thank you for your efforts. Any comments, Commissioner?
I just want to personally recognize you for all you've done and thank you. You are, we are also proud of you, Eddie, and there are many people on the docks that appreciate those restrooms as well, all our visitors in town.
Any public comments? He is a sponger. Next, we'll go to item number five, FDOT Landscape Enhancement, US-19.
As we continue the good news of this evening, it's very good to have a meeting like this where there's a lot of good news. This is a project where FDOT is spending a good deal of money to enhance our entranceway into Tarpon Springs, and I'm going to have them speak to you and let them know what a change you'll see as you come in on US-19 and hit Tarpon Avenue to come into Tarpon Corridor, which just goes along with everything we've done down Tarpon Avenue and have worked on throughout the city of beautification. I'm going to have them let you know what they're doing in their right-of-way to truly make it an entranceway off of 19 into the city that we're all going to be happy and proud of.
Thank you very much. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Tim O'Brien, and I'm a senior project manager with the Florida Department of Transportation. With me tonight, I have Don Byer and David Connor. First thing I'd like to do, first and foremost, since my name is O'Brien, I'd like to wish everyone a happy and a safe, especially a safe St. Patrick's Day. I plan to do a little bit of celebrating, not a lot, because I live in Wyomama, so it's going to take me a little bit of time to get, but I, I've asked my wife to set something aside when I get home, kind of like Santa Claus, when you set something out for him, when he gets home, take that drink and then hit the showers and then hit the hay. But I digress. We're here tonight to discuss the US-19 landscaping projects. The limits of our project are north of Martin Luther King Drive, around the McDonald's area, to Cypress Street, which is up around Staples. And the work is going to be performed on the west side of US-19, so we should not m- muck up traffic too awfully bad. That's my brief presentation. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Connor and let him do his thing.
Okay, let me... Let's see. Okay. All right, thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here and to present the design concepts. We've been working on these for several months. So what I'm going to show you is the process and then the completed project that will be going to bid. So again, the project here shows you an aerial, this is a Google image or an aerial image that will show you the scope of the work. It is all on the west side of the road. It's a large area of right-of-way that was purchased a long time ago and preserved for roadway work, but no roadway work is planned there in the future. Today, it's an open space. If you were to drive by it, it just looks like an expansive green area of lawn that has to be maintained. There are some existing light poles. There's very little landscape. There is a sidewalk that is adjacent to the retail development, but other than that, it's an open space. Our design initially looked at what impacts any improvements in this area might have, identified some utilities in the areas, and we developed a potential location for any improvements. And you can see it's fairly wide open. The green areas indicate the potential locations for planting. So we had a fairly significant and wide-open location. Our concern for any improvements along state roads, anywhere there are businesses, is how does it fit into the neighborhood? How does it fit into the community? Does it, are we doing something that enhances the local community? And especially landscape improvements on an FDOT right-of-way, it's very important that we be very much respectful of that local environment. And so we also are very concerned about maintenance. As you might imagine, FDOT, we do a great job of planting projects. We have to also maintain those, and we have very little resources, and we have to stretch our resources. So we're concentrating on doing native plant materials that are indicative to the local environment. So our concentration is on indigenous materials that we feel would be here already. You can see here some of the images and characterizations that we presented to FDOT and discussed. We particularly like the image in the lower left-hand corner of the palm trees along what, to us, would be similar to what you would see along the Anclot River, where the mangrove and palm trees sort of flank the side of the river. Feel like that is a very common sort of image to what Tarpon Springs might have been many, many years ago, before it became developed. These are some other images that sort of reflect much of what Florida, the cabbage palm, that is so common as our state tree and so important to us. So from there, the next thing that we really are very much concerned about is neighborhood impacts, business impacts, how this will affect people. We want to make sure we're not just creating a landscape improvement that is pretty, but something that also respects the neighborhood. So we began to look at the concerns that neighbors might have with visibility, especially to US 19, and began looking at how those visibility corridors could be established and maintained with landscape materials. I mean, you can see here that we developed a concept that would cluster palm trees in areas with view corridors in between them. By utilizing palm trees also, we would allow for more of an open, clear space between the ground and the canopy, and so that would also allow us to provide for enhancement. The trees that you'll see there are trees along the sidewalk, and in some areas along this particular stretch, there are some trees that were part of the development, although those are sporadic at best. The other thing that we wanted to reflect, and you'll see here, is sort of the connection to the water that Tarpon Springs has, which is so important. And so we wanted to incorporate shell rock as a part of the perimeter. That helps as a low-maintenance perimeter so that the landscape is protected from tree, from mowing activities and from people going through there. And so it helps to create a stable environment for the vegetation to become more naturalized once it's in place for a period of time. This is the final concept plans or the final construction plans. It's difficult to see at this level, but it shows you sort of the pattern. Just to clarify, because it's a little difficult to read, the black area is actually just grass improvements. Those are just sod. So the actual planting are the areas inside of the white zones, and I can show you here a greater detail. There's planting inside clusters and then shell rock around the perimeter of each one of the plant. The types of materials are cabbage palms. We do have a few date palms and bismarck palms to add a little bit of, they're not native, but they are something that adds a little interest. There's only a few in the part of the project. Also, saw palmetto, dune sunflower, which is a native plant material, soft yucca, shell rock is our plant, our ground plane, if you will, and coonti as part of our shrub material. All very drought tolerant. Once established, they are very easy to grow in this environment, and they require very little maintenance. The shell rock will also make it an easy area for us to maintain and to maintain, you know, to keep the character over a long period of time. This is an illustration, which we prepared to show you a concept of what the concept would look like. We're using palm trees that have been collected and are bent and not straight, to go back to that image I gave you, so that we're not just putting out a bunch of palm trees, just like what you would typically see, but we're trying to create something that would be more of a natural environment. So as this ages over time, it really begins to look like something that would fit into the community and be very respectful of the local environment and create what is today an open green space that is really unattractive and something we think will be very attractive for the future. Thank you very much.
Well, I just wanted to thank you, both you and Mr. O'Brien, for this presentation. Is there a time, did you talk about a time that you're going to start, and when should we look for this completion?
Yes, sir. Right now, we're looking to open bids in June, which would allow us to go to construction starting in August.
August with the completion time of approximately?
That I'm not sure. October?
October, okay.
My expert tells me October.
All right. Well, thank you. We definitely appreciate this, even though, you know, you guys are not spongers, but, you know, you're still bringing us some good gifts, and we definitely appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Any comments? Any public comments on this item? Thank you again. We look forward to it.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is consent, special events, car shows for charity, Merchants Association May 2nd, Flags for Freedom, Boy Scouts of Tarpon Springs, May 16th, Increase File Number 130066-C-JJ Electrical Products Through the U.S. Communities, Purchase and Alliance Master Agreement Number MA-I-S-1230234, Eight Extend File Number 130031-C-TK, Purchase of Dell Computing Equipment Through Florida State Contract Number 250-WSC-A-10-ACS, Nine is Award File Number 150078-N-R-S, Single Source Purchase of Centrifuse, Decanter, OEM Parts, Nine is Increased Bid Number 120054-B-TK Generator Maintenance, Eleven is Authorized Utilization of Florida Sheriff Association Bid Number 1517-07-020, Times and Related Services, Twelve is Ratify Increase to File Number 140059-C-JJ Through City of St. Petersburg RFQ Number 7563, Landscape Contractor Series, Thirteen is Increase File Number 140105-C-CM Fire Apparatus Inspection, Repair Service and Maintenance, and Fourteen is Award File Number 150088-N-R-S, Single Source Purchase of Mako Breathing Air Module Compressor. Is there any items? Oh, yes, sir.
Just a comment about 6A.
Okay.
Thank you. I would just say that I don't have any issue with the special events, especially as it relates to like a charity function. But Ms. Lemons talked about, as we approve these events, one of the things that we're trying to look for is not necessarily the sheer number of events, but more of a quality of event. And I hate to say that as it relates to a charity event, but it seems like the car shows that we're doing are beginning to get a little redundant as far as how many car shows we're doing. So that's just some personal feedback from me, Mark, as you take that to your Thursday meetings when you discuss this.
Yes. And they've all, you know, I have explained that to them in those meetings. But obviously, you know, there's some different charities. This was an event that came from Palm Harbor. But we have told them, again, as we did last year and went through this, about the number of events that closing down. They realized to stay within those numbers that we kind of agreed with, with all of the merchants. I would like to thank this group because they went to some of the merchants who was concerned about this one, to talk with them. As you can see, the map has very, very minimal closure on it. And a good thing to announce that we learned this week is that because of this show, Charlie Belcher is going to do his morning show from the downtown parking lot on Safford, and he will be promoting not only the car show, but the businesses of Tarpon Springs. If you remember, when he did his last show, it was down at the docks endorsing that, so he's bringing the, he's been involved with this charity before and stuff. And we will have exposure not only for the town and the show, but for our businesses of downtown. And that's going to be the last Monday in April, when that morning show on Channel 13 is everybody to look forward to. So we will do that and relay that message to them.
Thank you.
I also had a similar concern, and I see on here all the road closures. I know how our downtown business owners don't necessarily like some of those road closures, and I was concerned about how many roads will be closed for this event, and do we have a commitment from that many vendors that we need all of those? I mean, I see orange and safford and hibiscus and lemon, so with our parking situation downtown for our local businesses, I was concerned about that.
Yeah, so we've addressed that. As you see from the map, it's really minimal. It's about, you know, as much or less than some of the other events we've done down there, of the streets going to be open. So I think it will fill up those areas, and we have, they have done it in such a way, as you see on the map that you have in the dais, in the green, very minimal, probably the minimal closures you do for a downtown event to do that with. So the corrected map shows a little better. I know there's some confusion from the last one, but this map that, and I'd like to thank Sergeant Miller for the Police Department for working with them on this map. And this is about the minimal you can do in an event of this type and close down the areas and stuff, so it's drastically reduced, as you see on the map from the areas the green closed. So they did work, and they did do that for this event.
That's the comments for that. One thing I just, you know, I don't know, as we, they look at the annual events, is to see if some of those like events that Commissioner Tarpan, I think, was talking about, or at least kind of spread out, you know, it's not the same ones close together. I think would help have a better feel as far as, you know, what's happening downtown. So with that, any other items? Then Chair will entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second. Any public comments on this item?
I'm Martina Ochoa with the Merchants Association, so I just want to thank you. It's great to hear, you know, feedback, so we know. This particular charity car show was actually looked at a year ago because it's been held regularly in Palm Harbor. So we actually looked at it last year before. There were several other charitable events and car shows for this year, so we didn't realize there were going to be so many. But the events moving forward, we are looking at other items instead of more car shows because I agree, we've gotten kind of inundated with that, so we do appreciate that. But that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Is there no other public comments? Roll call?
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terrell Penny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Next item is special consent, item number 15, approved license agreement with First Baptist Church, basketball courts.
This is an item we talked about a little bit before. It's been bounced around for a while. We have looked at it, the Recreational Advisory Committee, which I know Mr. Smith and Mr. Function attends, they identified it as an area where you could possibly bring some recreation. All of us who are spongers and live out the west end realize we used to all go to the middle school basketball courts. I know I took all my sons, ranging from 27 to those courts until, unfortunately, schools had to come, had to become fortresses, and you can't get on and can't use them. So with those middle school courts being closed down six, seven, eight years, however long ago it was, the ability to have that type of recreation out there ended. This is an opportunity of working with the church and their agreement to make an area. We do have, as Commissioner Terrell Penny pointed out, we were going to have less money from the paving because that one taken off, so that will cover the small amount of surface we need for that lot. So that would be within the paving, within the amount we approved. We'll just do that for the place that was eliminated. Then it's got the cost. It's very, really very minimal cost to put those courts up and work with the church to provide a place to shoot baskets. There's really, you know, you know, being somebody who likes basketball, there's very few places that you're able to go to get into and do that with. So this partnership with the church, the contract has been looked at several times with the city attorney, and the city attorney is very comfortable with the contract. Again, it's really not that big of investment of money, but it will provide something on the west end that we presently don't have.
You know, I just want to say, I want to thank you and Recreation Advisory Committee and all the staff that was involved. For me, you know, we can't have enough recreation for our residents and especially our youth, you know. Having them involved is something that's going to help them both physically and help them even learn a little teamwork, and that it's not all about winning, hopefully, is a great thing. So I just want to thank everybody involved in this, you know. Any question, Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I'd also like to thank you, Mr. Lacouris, and everyone involved in trying to find a way to find a solution for this. I had a couple of questions. I presume it won't be lighted because I saw on the backup that it will be closed at sunset?
Right.
Okay. Is there any plan, because I know the court or courts, I guess it's two courts, will be on part of the parking lot. Is there a plan for parking if somebody wants to drive to, like, is there certain parking available to people?
There's parking along the, well, I don't know, the road. It's a road between the fire department and the church along the side of there. There's parking all along there. Aside from, you know, the ability to use a church lot, there's plenty of parking along the stretch of the fire department down to where the tower is on both sides of the road, to be able to park and do that, and even not disrupt or be on the church property and do that, that's where we, you know, the plan for parking is.
Does the church not want, I mean, is that part of the agreement, that they do not want people utilizing their parking?
No, they have no problem with that, but some people brought up the concerns of if there are issues or something with a lot, there's parking otherwise. But they have no issues of, you know, using that lot. They've got plenty of room. They have plenty of parking on that facility, so there are no issues that they brought up to us with that. But there are other places besides their lot also to park along there.
Okay. And then the backup mentioned $2,100 for vinyl fencing. Can you talk a little bit about that? Where is the fencing going to be? How high will the fencing be?
It's almost, if you know how it is at Dorset Park, it's a four-foot fence, and mainly it's the separation of balls or things with Gulf Road, you know. So it'll be a four-foot fence. It'll be along the parking lot, running from, like, from going towards the fire department down Gulf Road. And mainly, it'll be the separation of the road for, while all the hoop action will be going side to side, and any balls that come off go off someone's foot, that'll be kind of your separation, so we don't have people running out into the street, and a little bit of a protection and, you know, in a way, a fence in a way... And, uh, a little bit of a protection and, uh, you know, that, you know, in a way, a fence in a way to not only make aesthetically nice, but as a safety measure, um, keeping the balls from coming to the road. So it's kind of the same type of, type of separation you have for Harrison Street at the Dorset Park.
That makes sense.
From the street.
And then just for clarification on the, the license itself, and maybe this is a city attorney question. Um, it says that it's a license for five years, uh, and shall be automatically renewed for succeeding five-year terms. So will it then, I, I guess it won't be coming back before the board? It's just going to be automatically renewed?
Correct.
And then it also mentions, um, this license may be terminated by either party upon thirty days written. So at any point, literally at any point, the church may be under new leadership, they could decide, hey, we don't wanna have a basketball court there.
Correct.
And that would be their decision.
Right.
Okay, that, that makes sense. Thank you.
Let me, they don't wanna have a basketball court there, they wanna have us there. Cause I, I don't know if you can remove the basketball court.
Well, it's actually written in there that we, that they would have to give us reasonable period of time to remove the poles. Although being that we don't have anywhere else to put them, that's why we're putting them there. I can't imagine we'd go in and take them out. I just want clarification though, thank you.
Uh, just to follow up on what the Vice Mayor said, do we think that four-foot would be high enough? Or should we, when we're doing it now, do like a six-foot? Because I know even at Dorset Park, while it's not a lot, you know, I mean, that's a little closer to, maybe to Harrison. The ball do go across there and any ball that go across out in the Gulf Road is, is, is crazy, you know?
Well, because of where the two actual goals are gonna be located and the land and the, and the distance from there, that's what we're thinking. And of course, we didn't wanna do too much to, for height-wise blocking the front, because it is in the front of the church and stuff. So, so we looked at both of those in there, went on, stood there and actually, you know, again, looked at it from a ball aspect and playing ball, knowing how they go. And we think that will cover it and then not be too high to block off the entrance to the church.
Oh, Commissioner Tarpan?
Thank you. Um, Mr. LaCores, is there any need to now or later address Ms. Kern's email as it relates to any of her concerns for bathrooms or anything like that?
In my mind, no, but.
Okay.
I'll address the, uh, none of her concerns are, are relevant as far as I'm concerned.
Okay. Um, as it relates to the fence, the fence is actually gonna front on Gulf Road?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Mayor, you said something about potentially making the, the fence higher. If that was even something to discuss down the road, is that something that we would have to obtain like our own, an own variance for to go for? Four feet or, uh, six feet versus the four feet in the front yard?
We looked at it, I think we could go to six feet if, if we wanted to.
Could we go to six feet in the front yard?
Yeah.
Okay. Just out of curiosity. Uh, looks good, thank you.
Is there no other questions? Chair will entertain a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Any, uh, public comments on this item? Roll call?
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Uh, item number sixteen, a request to settle administrative fine on lien sixteen twenty-eight Treasure Drive.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. This is a request to settle a code enforcement lien on the property at sixteen twenty-eight Treasure Drive. Uh, these fines emanate from code enforcement, uh, activity beginning in November of two thousand nine and ending in roughly two thousand eleven. The accrued fines are a little bit over twenty-five thousand dollars. There is an offer from the owner, uh, for a thousand dollars to settle the fine plus the administrative costs, uh, for a total of two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, which I do recommend accepting. Uh, the property is in foreclosure and by all accounts, the, uh, present owner has, uh, taken control of the property and, uh, there, there have been no further issues on the property relative to code enforcement. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Did, um, anyone accept the, um, amount that you were proposing?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Yeah, you were recommending that we sell for twenty-two fifty, right?
Yes, sir.
And I'm just asking, has that been, you know, agreed upon figure there or that's just your recommendation?
That's been offered, thousands, a thousand's been offered by the property owner and we have administrative costs of one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay. Oh, but any questions there? Questions? I, I see y'all standing there and I tell you, this is a different type of proceeding here. And whether, whether there's something that, uh, the commission feel that you could add, it's not one that there's any real public comment on this item here. It's something that the commission itself basically deliberates and make a decision. So, um, I, I don't know how y'all feel in terms of where you're at with this. You need some additional information from the individuals that's before us, that's looking down for. Then if not, then Chair will entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the city attorney's recommendation. Second.
It's been properly moved, second, uh, roll call?
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Uh, the next item that we will have is, um, ordinance resolution, ordinance twenty fifteen dash zero six, application fourteen forty, status vacation right of way, second reading, and this is quasi-adjudicial.
So ordinance twenty fifteen dash zero six and ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, vacating and abandoning right of way for Bayou Boulevard from North Spring Boulevard to Lake Boulevard and Lake Boulevard from Pampas Avenue to Tarpon Bayou, providing for conditions, providing for findings, providing for future easements, providing for recordation of the public records of Pinellas County, and providing effective date and second reading of ordinance twenty fifteen dash zero six by title only, is published in the Tampa Bay Times by title with a map on March sixth, twenty fifteen. This item is quasi-adjudicial. We have had a, a full quasi-adjudicial hearing on first reading. I'd ask for anyone who intends to speak tonight to please stand and be sworn. Do you swear or affirm that testimony given this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? I'd recommend, uh, to both staff and the applicant that, uh, their presentations be limited to conditions that have changed since the first reading.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Uh, there have been no changes to the application at this time.
Does the applicant wish to add anything?
No.
Hearing that, uh, Chair will entertain a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Uh, the next item, eighteen, has been deferred as stated earlier. Um, item number nineteen is resolution twenty fifteen dash fifteen, purchase of property parcel twelve twenty-seven fifteen eight nine 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 eight two, uh, uh, one two four zero one zero one, located in the twelve hundred blocks of East Tarpon Avenue.
Resolution twenty fifteen dash fifteen, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving the purchase of certain lands, providing for funding for such purpose, providing for the authorization for certain city officials to execute closing documents and providing for an effective date hereof. That's resolution twenty fifteen dash fifteen by title only.
Good evening, Paul Smith, Public Services Director. And, um, as described, this is a parcel of land that is located on the east side of US nineteen. In fact, it's, um, just east of Jasmine Avenue, uh, over by the cemetery there. And this parcel land is a little over point six acres and it represents, I believe, a real opportunity for the city for two reasons. One is it provides an important access to one of our freshwater wells that's, um, a long-term operational issue. And, um, that additional access will help us in the operation of that well. But also it butts the, uh, sports complex and there's an opportunity to have additional overflow parking. Uh, and, you know, we're interested in, of course, preserving the natural, uh, feel of the lot. So it would be done in a, in the spirit of, um, the current parking where trees are maintained and that sort of thing. But as you all probably know, parking is an issue at the sports complex during, um, peak parts of the seasons. And, um, so it would help us in that way. Be happy to answer any questions about it.
I, I don't really have a lot of questions. I'd say I'm definitely, uh, feel set. If you've been out there, that parking is definitely needed in the area. So it's good that we can do some things that, um, help us in, uh, not only for, for as the wells are concerned, but to alleviate some of the, uh, parking concerns that we have, uh, in that area. Uh, just as a aside, I really haven't had a chance to talk with the city manager a lot about it. But, um, you know, the possibility of doing some other things with the field that I didn't think would be, be, um, uh, feasible because we don't really have some parking. And that's talking about, um, soccer and sock on a major league level that some of the other cities are entertaining now, um, to try to look at having spring training in the Pinellas County area that might be feasible as we look at going forward, so. But, um, any, uh, Commissioner Tarpan?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Smith, looking at the survey, um, first of all, this property is just, uh, east of Jasmine and it's adjacent to, uh, the Laser Spa Clinic or something like that?
Yes, I think it's two lots over from Jasmine, yes.
Two lots over from Jasmine, it's listed by Bob Hay?
I'm not sure the realtor, but that does sound familiar.
Okay. Um, so is there access currently? Is there access off of Tarpon Avenue or Keystone Road?
It's limited access. You'll see on the survey, they actually reference a little bit of an asphalt type of drive. And that's been used, um, for deliveries to the well site and occasional maintenance. Um, these are sporadic things, but really are necessary for continued operation.
Right. And the well site, looking at the survey, is where it says the concrete slab and utility pedestal? Is that right?
Uh, no, it's actually on the other side. It's just east and immediately east of the lot. So I think it, it mislabeled it as a lift station, but it's actually a well pump.
So it's, it's like almost immediately adjacent to the, uh, gravel and asphalt drive that it shows?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Um, is there a potential in the future for that access to be, um, better utilized or, uh, function better as, as an access to the potentially moving forward as something that could be utilized as an access to the parking for the recreation facility? Because I see it as a benefit to both. Um, you know, certainly the, the well, but also for the, the parking that I think you mentioned and envisioning as something that looks similar to like, uh, Bill Jackson's, how they have their parking set up.
Right. Yeah, it would be our recommendation at this time to, to not improve that access any further. I think that would be problematic, um, getting a permit for an apron like you're talking about, uh, for that as well. Could bring in a whole host of issues with, um, with the county. But also I think that, um, the single point of coming out the way it is now is safer. And, you know, Chief Cochin could probably speak to that more, but having this uncontrolled exiting, coming out onto the fairly busy road there without the benefit of a light could be a problem, so.
So the property to the, I guess the property backs up to the ball field where, to the north, east and west?
Well, to the north. There's actually, um, an unimproved right of way that immediately is to the north. And then it's the parking area just on the other side of that. So that would be how we would envision interconnecting the two, is just having sort of a spur coming to the south onto this property for additional spaces.
Is there potential to, uh, enhance that Orange Street right of way or, or potentially vacate it?
That, you know, that's a possibility. We haven't really looked into that any further, but, you know, that's, that's another possibility as well.
Um, Mr. LaCores, why was the, just out of curiosity, the money is identified to pay for this out of the land preservation? How was that identified? If it's gonna be utilized for, uh, in part the sports complex, but also for, um, the utili, or the, the well? Why was it identified to pay for it with land preservation?
There's several different places it could probably come from. It could come from some from the water, a split. There was the available money in that fund to do that with, so. Um, but, you know, Mr. Herring could work some combinations with degrees. I think, I think when you were looking at that, that it could be put into different other areas. But again, there was the money there in that, in that one single thing to do. So if you wanna address that, Ron, or?
Good evening, Ron Herring, Finance Director. I believe that, looking at the Land Preservation Fund, it said it qualifies for anything park, recreation and conservation purposes. I think the thinking was if there was some water, from what I heard, it was mostly gonna be used for parks and recreation. But if it's gonna be used some for water, we can allocate that to the Water and Sewer Fund, whatever portion that is.
Yeah, I mean, without having the language in front of me of the Land Preservation Fund, I just feel like that's not necessarily the intent of that fund, other than what you said, Ron, which is for the parks and recs. But it's being presented to us tonight as more so for the, for the well. So if that's something that we could potentially, in my opinion, take a look at to see more so where the monies can come from.
I could have it looked that way and instead of that, we'll, we'll take the monies out of proportionally, we'll have them do a proportion.
Yeah, I mean, cause there's not a whole lot of money in that account as it sits right now. So it would almost drain it as far as the Land Preservation Fund goes.
Ron, if you do that and get within proportionally, and we'll, the funds will come proportionally from those, those funds.
Yeah, there's a hundred thousand in the fund now.
Hundred grand, yeah.
Yeah, I, I have a problem.
Okay. We'll do that.
Thank you.
Any other, uh, questions?
Yep.
Uh, Vice Mayor?
Thank you very much. Uh, I, I would like to thank Commissioner Terpenny for bringing up the Land Preservation Fund. Is, is this the first purchase being made from the Land Preservation Fund?
Yes.
That's, that's what I thought. And I, I appreciate, again, Commissioner Terpenny being, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, I didn't wanna interrupt you. But yeah, it's the money that, from the nursing home.
Yeah. No, and I, I think it's important that we be mindful of how that money is spent. And I, I think it probably does meet the, the criteria that, that was listed within the ordinance. Um, but I, I do think that it's important that we be mindful of, of what we do with that money. Um, I, I will say I'm pleased with, uh, I'm pleased with that parking lot as it is right now in terms of, uh, the efforts that have been made to keep that parking lot kind of a natural-looking parking lot. And I, I see from the, uh, the backup, it says the intended site design would retain the existing natural theme by preserving as much of the natural floor as possible. So having that in there makes me feel a little bit better about some portion of it being funded by the Land Preservation Fund. But I, I think it probably would be best, I'm glad everyone agrees, that, that maybe some portion of it could be funded from a different avenue. Thank you.
We'll do that.
Is there no other, uh, questions? Chair will entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any, uh, public comments on this item?
Just a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Maybe for the city attorney. Uh, we've got a motion and a second. Do we need to clarify as part of the motion that we're changing where the funding is coming from? Or is that not necessary because it's already been discussed?
No, it's not part of the resolution, so you can do that administratively.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call?
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Uh, the next item, item number twenty, a resolution twenty fifteen dash fourteen, supporting the designation of a portion of the alternate, uh, alternate, yeah, it's nineteen. That's, uh, a little wild on my, uh, stuff here. But I, I think that's supposed to be, uh, the portion of the public safety building as the Officer Charles K. Condeck Jr. Oh, this is another one?
Yeah, this is different.
Oh, okay. All right, I'm sorry. Resolution twenty fourteen, supporting the designation of a portion of alternate nineteen US Highway as Officer Charles K. Condeck Jr. Memorial Highway.
Resolution twenty fifteen dash fourteen, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, in support of legislation designated a portion of alternate US Highway nineteen, Pinellas Avenue, as the Charles, Charlie K. Condeck Jr. Memorial Highway and providing for an effective dates, resolution twenty fifteen dash fourteen by title only.
This is, um, this is common throughout the state when a police officer is killed. This is, uh, generated by the Florida Legislature. I believe it's, uh, Representative Sprawls, correct, yeah?
Yes, our newly elected, our newly elected.
Right, so they, they've done this throughout the state. It's a common practice, so they just wanted our support as they move forward with this legislation. And we, um, you know, Police Department, um, we appreciate, uh, commission support on this. I think it's important.
Is there gonna be the necessary signage and stuff that will be following this if they pass it?
Yeah, yeah. And again, it's not a name change, it's just honoring him, it's a memorial highway, so.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, I'm, and I understand that part there, but it's, to me, it's hard to get any, um, recognition even from a memorial perspective if there's no signage at all.
There's gonna be signage.
Yeah, that's, that's part of the.
That was the question.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, Mr. Sprawls, as you see, if you drive the highway, I think on fifty-four, there's the, you know, I know driving this weekend, I saw. Uh, and you see them all around, uh, uh, the first step is him putting the legislature, again, it's important that the, have the community behind it. And then when it's approved, then they put up those signs, they do put up those, they're very nice.
Probably one at the county line and one at, at alternate nineteen.
If you've seen them, they're very nice signs honoring, uh, people throughout the state. And, uh, you know, we'll be, and Charlie K. will be a part of that network around the state honoring, um, people and fallen officers and important people throughout the state. And we thank, again, we thank our new representative, Mr. Sprawls, for jumping right in fast and, uh, going right to that and getting that for the. going right to that, and getting that for this legislative session.
Oh, any comments, Commissioner?
Just to say, I was with, I was with Sprouls in Tallahassee yesterday, and he expressed that this was important to him, and obviously, he is serving us well there in Tallahassee, I think, and it's nice that we have a representative in Tallahassee that is passionate about Tarpon Springs.
Chair will entertain a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Any public comments? Roll call.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarpani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes, oh, the next item is resolution twenty fifteen, reorganization Finance Department.
Resolution twenty fifteen dash thirteen, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, authorizing changes in the Finance Department organization, including a revised job description and creation of a new job title, and providing an effective date hereof, resolution twenty fifteen dash thirteen by title only.
Let me set this up for Ron. If you remember, a short time ago, before she left, Ari Walker came to you with a reorganization. Why this position was in the reorganization was we had a longtime employee who was going through some serious medical issues to the point of we weren't sure if that employee was going to be back or not, so obviously, with her under those situations and not knowing, that was not included. The good news is that employee has come back to work and is anticipating retiring real soon, so because of that, we'll have, Mr. Herring wants to bring this forward, the plan for finance about this position, and where that position will go to once she retires, and what you're doing in this resolution is we're holding off hiring another position in finance, while this position comes in and learns all they can from the many-year employee they'll be leaving us, and can hit the, you know, with budget hitting, hitting right-of-way and something, this will get that person up to date and going. When she retires and this new position comes in, then we'll fill the position that is open, so not only is it not costing any money, it'll probably save, I think that position's a little more, but it'll at least break even or save, there'll be no money impact by this, so that's just kind of set to where it is, you want to say something about the position, Ron?
You hit all my notes here. Now, I got to say, the person in the position's been here, I think, twenty-five years, she plans on retiring this summer. The position has evolved, you know, it's an executive secretary, and she, it's basically turned into an accounting position, and that's why we're looking for a position title, and what it's been doing now is more accounting payroll, and that's why we sort of wrapped the two positions together, and probably a little bit more advanced work, helping out with payroll, we really have one really good payroll person doing payroll, we need somebody to help that person, another person to help the accounting specialist, so to learn some more higher-level duties also. But we wanted to, like Mike Mark said, hire the position now, so we can get them in, have them sit with the current person, learn some of those duties, and then also learn the higher-level duties. We have a vacant senior staff account position, which we will hold off on filling right now, so we feel the need is more urgent to have the new accounting payroll specialist position.
Any questions? Chair will entertain a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Any public comments? Roll call.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarpani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes, oh, next miscellaneous item, item number twenty-two, reaffirmation of Parks Recreation Advisory Board members, this is kind of straightforward, it's to reaffirm the members that's listed.
Move for approval, second.
Oh, any public comments? Roll call.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarpani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes, oh, this concludes the agenda for today, Chief, Chief Major, Major Chief?
No comments. Big chief.
No comments.
City Manager?
No, again, we've had a lot of good news tonight, and we've really had a good half of the year that's ending, we will probably come to you probably the second meeting in April, and we saw a lot of different things that we've accomplished in the CRI, we'll probably talk a little bit on that second meeting in April about some of the things we've done in this first six months of the year, and going into our second six months, and into the budget season, so, so we'll look to that probably the second meeting of April.
Madam Clerk?
No comments.
Commissioner Badger?
No comments.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, I'd like to wish everyone Happy St. Patty's Day, I'd like to congratulate the city manager and city staff for the various positive agenda items this evening, and I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank the two young gentlemen in the back row who happen to be my sons for their excellent behavior this evening. Thank you.
Oh, Commissioner Tarpani?
No comments.
Oh, Commissioner?
Just Happy St. Patrick's Day to everyone.
And I can say those gentlemen was so quiet back there, I didn't even notice them back there, you know? But I just say to everybody is that the mayor's fitness challenge is winding up, tomorrow I think you can go and do your blood work from six AM at North Pinellas County, North Pinellas Hospital, and I'd just like to let everybody know, because I've been hearing a little rumbling, that none of the dollars that's being used is that, is taxpayers' money, this has really been supported by the business community, and it's been a good community effort, so.
In fact, let me, another little piece of news, I know, I think Karen Lemon's on the first meeting of April is going to talk a little bit about the fitness challenge, but not only that, but we're going to have some money left over, and I want to say, in watching this fitness challenge and talking with a lot of people, we plan for it not to end on that way, and I think we've started a good effort here, I think we've started a model for cities, so we are looking to bring to you in the near future some efforts to have the mayor's challenge continue in different forms throughout the rest of the year, as far as monthly events, maybe walks. The mayor's already had a bunch of people calling his day about his kickball efforts at the school, and people calling for his picture, so because of what this done and how positive, again, this was something we were hoping we'd get fifty to seventy-five people sign up for, and we'd be ecstatic, and we had over two hundred on a terrible night to try to trek and get to somewhere and have people waiting, so Ms. Lemon, Zai, Mr. Dolan, and we will be bringing you and continuing April, May, June, and throughout the year, different events, we've got some money left over, and hopefully, we can partner again with some of our fitness people and some other places to continue programs in our parks, within our city, and promoting fitness in our school and our community, so this is not the end, this is going to be just the beginning for us along this, and I think we'll end up being a model city. I know the people from healthy communities, those are the people, if you remember, who funded our equipment at the park, the fitness park, I know they're looking at us to help us and possibly provide us some additional monies towards fitness and healthy communities, and looking at this program, so there are some opportunities to really expand what we've done in that area and keep it moving along because of your things, so that you'll be, another positive thing we'll be seeing in the future, to continue this program, and what it's done for some people and that's been involved with the program, and then have everybody else get involved, there weren't, they can come in and walk and do the different fitness things, and keep participating in the program.
Thank you, and with that, we will adjourn this meeting at, look like eight oh seven and a half.
I just want you to know.